I'm meeting the Mayor and Board of Aldermen for November 5th, 2024. If you will join me in prayer and pledge.
Heavenly Father, as we come to you today, we just thank you for your blessings, Father, your mercy and your grace you share with each one of us, Father. We ask that you will guide us in our thoughts, in the directions and decisions that we make for the citizens that we represent, Father. We ask that you will bless our city, our county, and our state and our country, Father. And pray, Father God, that you will just watch over this nation and protect us and keep us safe. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Welcome to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Okay. Roll call. Patrick?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
Donald?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Angie?
Here.
And Bernie?
Present.
All right, we have a full court tonight, and we have no public hearings. I've got any public comments? No public comments? Announcement, presentation, proclamation, I have two. First, we have the first responder of the year, sponsored by Keesler Federal Credit Union. If y'all would like to come up to make this, bring up your police and your fire chief.
Can you maybe walk you down the steps here, Paul Paul?
Well, thank y'all for having us. On behalf of Keesler Federal Credit Union and the Leslie Harvey Branch Manager in Long Beach, we wanted to honor one of your very own. One thing we say, Keesler Federal Credit Union, is that we serve the community, but without people like you, there's no community to serve. So on behalf of Keesler Federal Credit Union, Detective Gillett, you are our 2024 First Responder of the Year for the Long Beach Police Department.
Congratulations. Okay.
Important recognition, Rob. Yeah, sure. One, two, three. Let's do that.
I love it.
Camp of World.
I've done it twice, but it's gonna look like this.
All right, our second one is a certificate of proclamation from the Mayor's Office and the Aldermen. It's, and I'll read it off, "Whereas the City of Long Beach celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 61.1% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 45.9% of employees in the private sector in the United States. And 68 cents of every dollar spent on a small business in U.S. stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small business creates an additional 48 cents in local businesses' activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And 59% of U.S. consumers aware of small businesses Saturday shop or eat at the small, independent-owned retailer or restaurant on Small Business Saturday in 2023. And whereas Long Beach, Mississippi supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community, and advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, George L. Bass, Mayor of the City of Long Beach, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim, November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, celebrating its 15th year in 2024, and shop small throughout the year." So. You want us to get up so you can see us and get together? That I will. We all in?
Yes. Everyone.
I have my stomach.
Two, three, hold it.
All right, me. One, two, three.
What? You got them all?
Yeah.
You need to stick her back.
And I know all of you, I think all of y'all have received this Veterans Day celebration. Let me get back here where I get to Mike again, so everyone can hear me. We're talking about a Veterans Day celebration. This is Monday, November 11th, 5:30 to 7:30, and it's gonna be at the Coastal Daiquiri here on Jeff Davis. It's sponsored by Coast Cares Foundation, with generous donations by Coastal Daiquiri. Smoke and Go Barbecue, Harrison County Sheriff Matt Haley, Tracks Bar and Grill, Michael McGill, Donald Frazier, Alderman at Large, and Harrison County Chancery Clerk Angela Thrash, and Elvis Gates. Music by Gulf South Events LLC. So this is an event to celebrate our veterans, and, you know, we need to every day celebrate our veterans, that those that have survived and those that have given their life for, that we could be here as a free nation today doing this. So y'all participate in this. I think it's very worthy, and I will say this. Mr. Pete McGooey on my left, Mr. Bernie Parker on my right, have both served our nation. And thank you, and both of you and everybody else that has served, Army and Marine. So, thank y'all.
Also comment on the junior high is putting on a Veterans Day also this coming 7th, I think it is.
Thursday, Thursday at 9 o'clock.
Thursday morning.
Yeah, and they, that program that they put on is wonderful. If you haven't had a chance to get by there and see the recognition that's shared of our veterans, for our veterans, and with our veterans, it's a wonderful program, so. All right, thank y'all.
Angie's one that has organized this. I'd like to say thank to her also.
Okay. It's Andy Johnson. Thank you.
You're welcome.
She wanted to serve, but they wouldn't let her. So she's doing this way. I'm joking. All right, moving on. We have any amendments to the municipal docket? Hearing none. We'll move forward. Approved minutes, Mayor and Board of Aldermen, October 15th, 2024, regular and executive session. And October 22nd, 2024, work session. Motion, second, discussion, and approval?
Most.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Planning and Development Commission, October 24th, 2024, regular. Motion second for discussion and approval?
Motion.
Second with discussion.
Discussion.
I have a question. Mike, on that second request for a short-term rental, all the paperwork was there, but because somebody wasn't there, it was pinned. Was all the information correct and ready to go?
I think it was. There was no representative for that property at the meeting.
All right, if everything was...
I think that's been their common practice, that if a representative does not show up, they'll table it.
Right, but we, and we have pulled some before.
Yeah, I mean.
I know, so was there a problem or does it?
I don't think there's a problem. We do like to talk with the property manager or the property owner and let them know all the details. So we like them to be at the meeting. So that's why they tabled.
My question's been answered.
Okay, any more thoughts or questions? All those in favor of approval? Motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm trying to get ahead of myself here. Y'all approved document claims number 110524. Motion second for approval?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no unfinished business. Under new business, reallocation of funding for Long Beach Project Gulf Regional Planning. This is taking funding from, that's been funded for Pavel Road and Railroad, where we did the new lift station, redid that intersection, and moving it over to Cleveland Avenue and Klondike Road. You see the amount of the funding, the proposed funding, the local funding, moving to Cleveland Avenue, our local funding goes down, but allows us to improve that intersection. And I signed papers today through a vote with GRPC to allow that funding to be moved within GRPC if the city requests that, so.
Motion to move.
Second.
And motion second to move to Cleveland and Klondike. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Chase Cockrell, who's here for a Eagle Scout project. Is Chase here? Okay. With him not being here, let's...
You wanna table it? I'll make a motion that we table.
Motion, motion second, table and discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have agreement with all Safe Technologies, City Hall Security Cameras. Any motion, second, discussion, and approval?
Second.
Discussion.
This isn't our budget. We had already, we're this year's budget, correct?
Right.
Just to let everybody know.
Yeah, yes, it is. You're correct. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have cleanup assistance requests from Urban Forest. I don't have any paperwork on this.
I think Courtney has some information.
Courtney, have you got the information on this, Forest?
So we met with Sarah, who is with the Land Trust last week, and she is aware of some of the dump sites that are on the property, as well as the neighboring properties that some of you may have seen pictures of circling around Facebook. And she is requesting the community and the neighboring roads to get together and do a community-wide cleanup to kind of get that property cleaned up and ready, so that way when they're ready to do the trails in January, they won't have any setbacks. She is requesting the city to assist with trucks with public works. She will have crews that will be able to carry the items to the trucks if we put the trucks, like, near the road or by the ditches. And then she has said that they will pay to have them dumped and it carried away. She just needs the assistance of the trucks. And it will be held in December.
Yeah, and we're trying to get with Pelican to see if they'll bring their, Waste Management, one of them, bring their trucks over there to be able to pick it up and put it directly into their trucks to take it on out to the dump, to the dump site. If not, you know, we'll be able to, hopefully, y'all will approve us having, not going on the property. We can't do that, but we can stay on the road and let them bring it to our trucks to put it in there. And then, you know, they could take it the following Monday to the dump and dump it.
Mayor, do you need a motion?
I do.
Pending approval of Pelican, we assist in the event that they disapprove of it. I make that motion.
Okay. All right, we got a motion, a couple seconds, to assist without going on to the property, but being there for them and work with Waste Manager or Pelican. So, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. War Memorial Park Pavilion and Restrooms. Courtney, do you have any information on this? I know we've had this on here and...
So last meeting, everyone received the two quotes for the pavilions and the bathrooms, and we never made any motions to move forward.
And we don't know if y'all want to, if you want to bring it back with your information that we had last meeting on cost?
I'll make the motion to move forward with the cheaper company, the, what is it, Arm...
Can't remember. Don't look at me, Patrick.
Full Armor Homes.
Mike, Mike, what was the company that gave us the first bid?
Full Armor Home.
Full Armor.
Yes, thank you.
Second. All right, we got a motion second to move forward with Full Armor doing...
But substantially cheaper than the other.
They were, and that would be the bathrooms and the pavilion. Okay, got motion second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Cruising the Coast Committee, Alderman Brown.
So we had talked about it last, at the last meeting, and I'd like to propose that we have three Aldermen, and Courtney, and the police chief seal to form a committee. And I know there's been some, I think the city's wanting to do some improvements on our parade slash party, whatever we do, and/or do something else. So I'd like to ask that we get two other Aldermen.
Besides you.
Besides me.
I'd be interested.
I would too.
All right, somebody gotta flip a coin.
I'd like to put it, if I can put it in my schedule.
So y'all are gonna make a decision. We're gonna have a five-person committee.
And we're going to, I'd like to meet, if you'll set us up a time when we can all five meet, and then we'll set a meeting up with Woody, and then we'll also set a meeting up with Trucks and Tacos. And move forward with this, because I think we're missing a lot of opportunity here. I really do. I think after Monday, I don't think, my personal opinion, is on our parade is doing us any justice like it used to. And I'm not saying cancel it. I'm just saying, let's look at it, see if we can make it bigger or better options, correct?
So that's Bernie, Angie, and yourself? Or was it two?
Okay, yeah. Y'all flip a coin yet?
We're good.
I can't have four. I can't have four, y'all.
Six spots. He can take my spot. How's that?
Okay, all right, so we got Bernie, Angie, and Mikey. Brown will, our Alderman will be on the committee along with Chief Seal and Courtney. And was that a motion that you made?
Do we need one?
Yes.
I'll second his motion.
All right, we got a motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the sale of Fourth Street property resolution and deed. I got that somewhere here, yeah. I need a motion and a second for discussion and approval of the resolution. I need a motion and a second for discussion and approval of the resolution.
That is, if I may, board members, that is the resolution we talked about last week, which describes that the property was advertised after two appraisals were done, the city having received no bids. Under the statute, we received an offer to purchase, and under the statute, it was required to be the average of those two appraisals and one half of the cost of appraisals. Mr. Justin Shaw with Shaw Homes made such an offer, ultimately amended to comply with the statute, and the board directed me to prepare a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter and execute a quit claim deed with the property description for the Fourth Street property. The resolution also addresses that portion of the statute that the property is not being used for municipal purposes at this time. So that's all in the resolution.
All right, we've got a motion second, any further discussion? Roll call, Patrick?
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike, Kim, Angie?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I couldn't hear you, Angie, I'm.
It's in the order.
All right, so we got a sub move, motion carries. Next, we have discussion cyber cybersecurity. We met in our work session, we talked about this. I would like to request that we move forward with working forward to get us a assessment. And we had talked about buildings, and I know we got to talk about City Hall, Fire Department, and of course, the libraries stand alone. I'm not sure if they're doing anything that's connecting to our system to do purchase orders or anything like that, that they still stand alone. That leaves us with with the rec, the senior rec with Bob at Parks and Recreation, and then Harry down at the harbor, as Harry hooked into us too. So Harry could stay out until further, until we get it processed to where he can be in. Bob, you you're connected to us. And, you know, when I say the City Hall, that includes the court, Ms. Emma, that I know you've got some protection through what the police department's done already. No, no protection, I thought you did.
Do we have to have an assessment? Because I think it's probably, we know it was bad.
Well, we do know it's bad.
We probably need to move pretty quick to.
Thank you, I I don't know.
Hit somebody, because that's probably our biggest threat.
Yeah, I know it. Nikki, do y'all, I get, come up to the mic and let us talk to you, because I I think, you know, I totally agree with what Patrick just said, we know it's bad. And I guess with the assessment, what I'm really truly saying is we need a cost estimate.
So you've already, you've already had the assessment from the state CISA coordinator, and he gave you the results of that. So the assessment's been done, I think the assessment that we were speaking about was you wanted to know the cost after having to replace any hardware that was out of support. As I mentioned, you're only as strong as your weakest link, and if you have hardware that's out of support and can't receive security updates and protection, then that will have to be replaced. Now, I did say that we would work on a budget and help you prioritize those things, but I think that's what we were talking about when you mentioned assessment, is for us to come in and look at every computer and figure out which ones are out of support and need to be replaced rather quickly.
And that would lead us to a cost analysis that we will really, we really need.
Yes, sir. Now, if we if we do an assessment, we would credit that, and you decided to move forward with services, then we would credit that back to you, but but it will take a little bit of time.
I think, I have, I think that all departments, because you're you're sending information back and forth no matter what, so I think the assessment needs to include everybody. You're going to tell us how much, so we'll know, you know, but our whole departments communicate, so every single employee needs to be under the same assessment and policies and procedures once those are performed, so I think it should be everything.
And I agree, let them assess whether we need to have the the library in there or anybody else, whether we really need them in there, if we don't, let them tell us, that's what we're hiring them to do.
So I can tell you, the library, they operate with, under the state library system, and they have their own IT support, so that wouldn't be included, you wouldn't have to pay for that.
Okay, but I'm like you, Angie, I don't mind, we do an assessment, let's let's check with the, I mean, because eventually, we're going to have our harbor back functioning as it was before, and we need to make sure we got that and got, you know, everybody needs to be connected, connected, so.
Motion?
Motion for to go to agreement with AGJ, correct?
You got it, Mikey Brown.
All right, and to do the assessment, cost analysis, that's my motion.
And right now, I don't have a cost of what it would take for them to do that, but it'll be credited back to us when it's done. I want y'all to understand that. Okay, so that was the motion.
Yes, sir.
And we got three seconds on it. So the rest of y'all, let's vote on and approve it?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Nikki, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
It's been a long time coming, so we got to have it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. All right, and Angie, I went ahead and talked about the Veterans Day when I was talking up front, so do you need to say anything more on it?
No, I wouldn't, I'd just like to say Jennifer Glenn and I are coordinating this, but our generous donors, we're feeding our veterans, and so we want people, we have a DJ, and we want everybody to come out and have a good time between 5:30 and 7:30 at Coastal Daiquiri, and so we just appreciate our veterans and want to show them.
Show them we do.
That's right.
Let them know. All right, thank you, Angie. All right, department business, mayor's office, I've got two things. We, Courtney and I met with Mississippi Power, what did I do with those?
We have copies.
Y'all have copies of Mississippi Power?
Talking about the lights?
I don't.
Here, you can have mine.
Well, anyway, I don't, I don't need it, y'all keep that. The problem is, and Bob could probably elaborate more on this, at the town green, y'all remember us approving to add a, to to purchase a new circuit board to control the lights down there?
Yeah.
We got that, and they flipped the switch and it it burned out, so they got a second one?
They have a second one on order, the whole panel, when they turned it on, it burned out.
Right, the new one.
So they ordered another one, we're waiting on the other one to come in. One of the issues, they say, is on our pole lights on the north side of the town green and on the south side of the town green, are one of their transformers up in the light apparently is shorted out. When those lights were installed, they did not have a fuse installed at the base of the light pole, which they should have. Weaver, who's working down there, I had them assess it, and they told me that one of the transformers went out, and that is the main, one of the major problems down here. Now, the panel had to be replaced because we couldn't control it anymore, but the light poles that are out there are another issue. So they suggest that we go in there and remove all the light pole, not the poles, but the lights, and change the lights up to, and they'll install a fuse at the bottom of the light. Right now, if we have a light that goes out and a transformer at the top blows up, all of them are done, it shorts everything out. And right now, if I turn the breaker on, one of the breakers down there for the light poles, it shuts the whole building down, it trips the whole building, so there's definitely issues. So they'll, if we lose a light pole next, one light with the fuse in the bottom, it'll just consolidate that one light, and we won't lose everything.
There, it'd be just that one.
Actually, it just may be a good time to think about getting rid of the transformer element, converting to LED.
That's what they want.
That's what, yeah, we'll be getting rid of that. And that that's those at at Town Green that we've we've got to address. The the other two we've got is for Fire Station Two and City Hall, and all three of these have the same situation, that these are wired from through structures, the buildings, City Hall's outside parking lights, Town Green's outside lights, and Station Two's outside lights. So we can't do the same agreement we did with Mississippi Power on Jeff Davis Avenue, where they would take over wiring poles, the the light heads, everything with that. This would require them to just maintain the light head on top of those poles, they would come in and replace them. And it gives us, it's an eighty-four month contract with them that can be extended, and you could see the cost down there for each one of them, eighty eight hun, eight hundred and eighty dollars would be for Town Green, Fire Station Two's two eighty, and City Hall would be two forty. We've got lights around here, one of them has got a top broken off of it, and it's full of leaves, we got others that are out, and we're facing the same situation here and at Station Two that we're facing at City Hall. So what I'm, what I'm doing is asking y'all to consider a motion and second to us to prove, move forward with these repairs, and do the same thing we did with it on Jeff Davis, with the exception of the ownership of the poles and the and the wiring.
Sub move.
Second with discussion.
Discussion.
Fire Department, do you have that in your budget?
I was just, when it came my turn to talk, I was going to tell him, we we converted all of our exterior lights to LED this week, we did it in-house.
So we throw this away, or remove this one?
Still, if you want to maintain the glow part of it, have it as a.
Did y'all change the lights over at Station Two to LED in the heads?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does it?
Can your fireman do the rest?
Can you do the rest of them?
Y'all are volunteering to do the ones at City Hall, too?
I can't answer that, because I'm not prepared to answer that.
You know, you don't answer that, they're not going to do that.
I know that.
No, we just.
But I guess.
I mean, this is, I mean, this is, with the LED bulbs, they don't, they don't go out that often. I mean, that's a lot of money to pay every year annually versus the upfront cost to put in LED once and just change LED bulbs. I mean, that's.
It's up to y'all, whatever direction y'all, just to bring it back to you like I did on Jeff Davis.
I have a quick question, Mr. Mayor. Is is twenty-two the current count that we have down there?
Yes, at the town green.
That's not just pole lights, correct? That's just building lights and everything you're converting.
Oh, that's just pole lights.
We had twenty-two pole lights.
Yes.
I don't have, really have a problem with doing the town green, but I'd like to phase in the other parts, if we don't have it budgeted, because I mean, now you're talking about fourteen hundred dollars a month.
Go out and ain't no lights out here, and I trip over that parking bumper?
Right, right.
I'm suing the city.
Okay.
Well, we can fix them once, and those LED bulbs don't go out like the old bulbs, they'll last a long time, and then you're just changing bulbs.
Well.
So what you're, what, Patrick, what you're saying is?
I'm good with the town green, but like the parking lot, I feel like we can do that in-house, maybe.
I know we can.
You would have to get with Public Works to bring them over here. I think you'll have a pushback from the firefighters wanting to come out and do that. It's not, it's not a, it's a different generation of firefighters now, so I think we we need to look at Public Works.
Agree.
And I mean, you know, let's face it.
I agree.
They, this.
I'd like to make a substitute motion, we move forward with the town green lights and.
Second.
And.
Hold off on the.
The, hold off.
Hold off on the other two, okay. All right, that's a motion, we got a second?
Second.
All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank y'all. Next, I've, no, that was all I had on that, because we moved forward. Personnel, Fire Department, we have step increase for one, education pay for one, and Recreation, we have a new hire and two resignations, and I would like to take this motion second for a discussion and discuss.
Second.
All right, discussion, I've been talking to Bob about his pay for his employees, and you, you, what was your your thoughts on this, to make sure you've got employees? He's had previous employees that were, you know, that at least one, maybe two days a week, they took off, and he couldn't have anybody, he'd have two of the, how many, five employees?
Five, we have five, we have five full-time employees, not including me, I have one that's out on cancer right now, he's been out for a couple of months, I just had two that have been removed, and I've got two left. I talked to Stacy about step increases, and she explained to me that we can bring them up in step increases, and we can start our new employees at fifteen an hour, which would be a big increase from what we're paying them now. And I feel if we do that, we would get better employees, and at least they'd be a little bit more loyal than what we were in the past. So Stacy said that, you know, it's up to the board, but that was her recommendation, bring up the ones that I have now, bring them up a couple of step increases, and then the new people start at fifteen dollars an hour.
And and I wanted to bring this up, we're not going to vote on this tonight, I've, we got to have figures from him and his budget and bring that back to us, but I want y'all to know that this is where we're at with employees over here, it's hard for us to get them and get them to to work to meet their employment requirements.
Just to reiterate, this came up after COVID, when companies were offering sign-in bonuses to hire on and things like that, things that we can't do as a city.
Right.
To give you an idea where I'm at right now, before COVID, I had nine people, I had inmates and five regular, that's nine people. Today, I have two, doing the same job, so, I mean, actually, the two and myself, we're getting it done, H2O, they're they're doing great, they're picking up whatever I need, I call them, and they're spot on, so we're getting it done, and we'll have a new employee starting on the sixteenth, so we'll make it happen.
Yeah, okay. Any more thoughts, discussion? I'm going to go back to the original motion that we approved, the Fire Department Recreation, we have motion and second, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have budget amendment for FY twenty-five Police Department, motion and second for discussion?
Motion.
Got a motion and second, any discussion?
Discussion, just chief, just where the general public will know this, you're pulling out of this old budget to put in a new budget, because you had a server and you're waiting on invoice.
Correct, the server y'all funded in the last budget was on back order and came in and was installed, it was after the budget ended, so I'm just moving the money out of last year's budget into this year's budget to pay the bill, we already had the purchase order cut.
It was an encumbered fund from last budget that's just been, we're looking to move forward.
Internet.
Right.
Thank you, Mikey.
Yeah, that's basic bookkeeping. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Fire Department Chief, you got anything?
No, sir, not tonight.
Okay, Police Department Chief, you got anything?
No, sir, not tonight.
You good?
I'm good.
Didn't look like it on your face there, I thought you fixed to share something with us.
I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Engineering, we've got a lot tonight on here. Addendum to professional service contract with Overstreet and Associates, this is basically extending the, what we do with our contract, and it's in there to be able to extend it.
Right, it's no cost, just a time extension.
Right, got a motion and second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we got Tidlin's, Tidlin's Grant for twenty twenty-five, this is five hundred thousand dollars, comes from the the state legislators awarded this through through the Tidlin's Grant, and it could, it will be used at the, for harbor improvements. And I need a motion and second for approval and acceptance?
Second.
We got a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the acceptance substance of the casting point subdivision phases two and through five. Motion second, discussion?
Motion. Second with discussion.
All right, discuss it for me.
So, Mr. Mayor, this we, let me kind of go into the, these are, this is Phase Two through Five, this is the front section. As you guys recall, we had an issue with the ditch not being finished, that is actually Section Six. Okay, so these, these have been, David, these have been held up for a little while now, Okay. So these, these have been, David, these have been held up for a little while now, uh, and the warranty period is up for us to accept. Um, to add before David adds anything else, an update on Section Six. I did talk to the developer's attorney this past week. I explained the situation that we had and the stance that the city took, um, when we were discussing this, uh, ditch. Uh, he, he's in agreeance with me and was reaching out to his clients to encourage them strongly to finish this ditch project and any other warranty issues in Section Six that we just did the inspection on, what, two weeks, three weeks ago?
Yeah, about a month ago.
Within, within the month.
Yeah.
Does that cover it?
This, this is, uh, you know, David, uh, has approved two through five.
That's right.
Already for acceptance. At least that's six one out till we get the clarification that, well, till we get, uh, completion of this ditch. And it's, you know, it's gotta meet our engineers and it's gotta meet those homeowners there affected by it.
So David, it, once a ditch is done on six, it's ready for approval?
There are, there are a few minor warranty issues that we've passed on to the developer. The ditch is, is one of the major things.
I mean, I, I don't wanna sound like we can hold this over his head, two through five, but, I mean, until he gets six done?
That, that certainly would be y'all's decision. We're, we're willing to accept two through five and, and let the city take over maintenance there if that's-
Sounds like we have a problem with six, so.
Six on its own can be held.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it can be held.
Mike, let me just ask, also add to what you're saying. Six warranty just came up. So we couldn't have released six regardless within, until the past-
No, no, no. I, I don't mean that. I'm talking about-
No, but I wanted to add that to it. I see what you're saying, but-
Dragging and us not approving two, three, five, two through five until six is fixed.
As leverage.
I see where you're coming from. Um, in my only, uh, pushback on that.
That's fine. I'm, I'm good with two. Go ahead and approve it.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion on approving two through five? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have Pineville Road Widening. Uh, a motion and second discussion.
Motion. Second.
I got a motion second. This is the widening's taking place to the west of Beetline, uh, where we're having to expand the road out. Uh, and it's looked terrible right now. Uh, you know, people need to be with us and wait for us, uh, to, and be patient with us. Uh, David, you wanna explain what we've got here?
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, we'll happily do that. Um, this is our, really our contractual way forward from when our previous term big contractor kinda flopped on us and, uh, but, but the city had just had awarded to Warren and so we've been coordinating with them. It, it really kinda makes, it only makes sense to have the same contractor do the widening that's gonna do the overlay. And that's really what you're seeing here is, is the cost to finish the widening and perform the overlay that had previously been approved and it would be issued as a purchase order to Warren Paving.
All right.
You know I'm good with it.
All right. We've got a- I got a motion second on that. Uh, is there any more thoughts or discussions on this?
David, you said they'd start maybe at the end of this month?
That, they had said that they would be available mid Oc, mid-November and we've been pushing to continue to confirm that. So hopefully we're, we're on that track.
And this is, just as a point of order, uh, this money is in our paving budget, not out of our general budget.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah. All right. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have change order Eastern Bulkhead WC Four Trucking. Uh, motion and second for discussion.
Second.
Uh, discussion. David, you wanna explain here what we're, what we're asking for and what we will receive?
Absolutely. The contractors offered and, and requested permission to, um, as, as an advantage to the job, as a better deliverable product, to crush that existing riprap that you can see stockpiled there east of the Cleveland Avenue. They wanna crush that down to a smaller size, which will certainly make the backfilling requirements or, or the, the backfilling operation will be simpler and therefore will be better able to be completed appropriately. This is gonna create a better end product for us. There is some small cost associated, but, but we think it's a good idea. Our structural engineer desires to do it also.
What's the small cost?
Uh, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. But the results of it is, we could, with that compaction, uh, we feel like that we're gonna lose what we're facing now with the rest of the infiltration we get when we have storms of washing our field somewhere.
This definitely benefits the city. Was there no backfill in the original contract? That wasn't in-
There was. It was to use the existing riprap that was dug out.
And they didn't, I mean, they didn't-
To crush it.
Yeah. They didn't realize they started getting it out from below where you couldn't see the size of that, of those concrete riprap.
And if you go back and try to backfill with that, over the years, voids are gonna develop and we're gonna have bigger issues.
We're gonna have the same thing we faced before.
The point I'd, I'd also add, when I came into this meeting, the first thing I did was went and approached the individual on the other end who's in the contracting business. I had an issue with seventy-nine thousand additional dollars, but I've been assured that, um, this, as you say, is going to be an end product that we can live with and not have to go back and possibly repair later on. And it's something that's gonna behoove us in the long run to go ahead and do. But I just wanted to state it, it unnerved me at first, but I understand the need at this point.
Understand. I, I would offer that we, we had to kind of estimate and we did so. We estimated the size of the pile that is out there now. The contractor is going to sort through and, and get only concrete to go through the pile. So the actual amount to be paid will probably be less than this, but we, we wanted to estimate a number to get going with it. The final number will be less than, than what's predicted here.
Uh, my question is, didn't you have, um, have to have approval from the project engineer before? I think I talked to you about it once before and you said you had to have the, uh, approval from one of your engineers?
We did. We wanted to, to speak with the structural engineer about it and, and, and we did that. And he, he was on board with it. He, he thought, yeah, that's a great idea. We think it'll make the end product better and, you know, a better compaction process.
I remember asking you about it way back.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more discussion?
Fire Department can do the poles.
Thoughts? All those in, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have the Opera MCWI reimbursement. David, uh, I, I would, I would like to move this to the end because I think we got some legal implications on this and move it to a, uh, executive session.
Any motion?
Uh, well, I don't think we need a motion moving it in. I just need a shake of a head, you know, uh, to, to agree with me. Uh, and then we'll take it to the very end. Cause I've got two things that, plus another thing I need to go to executive session with. So, all right. Uh, Contract, Third Street Sidewalk Extension, uh, Overstreet and Associates.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have Contract, Pickleball Tennis Courts, Overstreet and Associates. A motion and second for discussion?
Motion.
Second discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Angie, if you wanna go first. You discuss?
Well, I was, yeah, you know, you wanna discuss too.
I, I was just wondering, and that, I don't mean to anything against the Overstreet Associates, but if we're going to get a company to come in here that builds pickleball courts, don't you think they'd have their own design? And why would we pay a engineer to design these courts?
We had to, had a estimate before from a company that does that and y'all wanted us to do the bids, to do the, the, the packet to send out.
Okay. Did not know that. Did I vote that?
Yes, you did. I think you made the motion.
No. So-
I was just coming up with a scope of work and is that what this is?
The, the, the package that we had been provided, you know, does basically say, put it on a five-inch, um, post-reinforced or, or post-tensioned concrete slab. I mean, and, and then there's the, I mean, so you probably need to at least have some design on that. Where is it gonna go on the site? You've got site work, uh, you know, but I'm-
I mean, you know, we, if we do it out there at the, at the senior rec, we've been bringing in this fill that came from, from the canals that they've been digging out to fill in that low area. You're gonna have to do some, some, uh, compaction studies there. Uh, and you know what? I think you call it geo-studies to make sure that, that we're building on, you know, stable ground. When you do a tension, uh, pull stress on a concrete slab, uh-
I think what Mike is saying is this, this company, if we're hiring a company that comes in-
They can do-
They probably have the design and the engineers would just have to sign off on it.
And I think, how many companies did we have? Only one?
Two, and then I just recently found another company that's out of Jackson.
We've got some that can bid on-
I don't have a problem doing the compaction tests and stuff.
Right. And see, and I think that's where we're going with this, if, unless I'm mis-
Yeah.
I, I was just, I'm concerned about the, I agree, but the, the design, because, you know, if these people work, do this, they go have their own design as how deep, how wide, so on and so forth.
And it's a pickle, I mean, it's a standard, you can't change the size.
Right. And sizes and everything are there.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, what we've gotta do is protect ourselves to make sure when they submit something, they giving us design, uh, concepts or drawings and, and details of what they're doing so that, that our engineers can look at it.
So have we reached out to Biloxi and all them on there when they designed and built all these courts?
So Pascrecia just recently finished theirs. They haven't even opened it. And it was a company out of Alabama. Um, I haven't reached out to Biloxi.
Can I offer one additional thought? I think one thing you wanna consider is, if, if this isn't right, I, we don't wanna do it for y'all if it's not what you desire. I think what you need to consider is how are you going to procure the construction or design services? If you're going to have a contractor or, or a company comes in that builds those, it's probably gonna be in the neighborhood of hundreds of thousands. And so to meet the purchasing requirements, you would need some sort of bid document.
Right.
That was what this intention was, to create a bid document.
Is this just to prepare to go to bid?
It, it is, but, but certainly, I mean, there's site work that's required. I would think there would be site work. It, it's basically to create a normal design for a project, which includes bid documents. So a contractor understands, I'm giving you a price to perform these scopes of service.
And, and we could be, unless we have specifics on what we're asking for, they could say, well, I just designed this court and put it there. I didn't say, didn't know you wanted a fence around it or a sidewalk to go to it or trash cans or, you know, bleachers.
Maybe wise to have these companies come out and look prior. I mean, you're talking five hundred thousand dollars. I don't think it'd be difficult to get these companies to come out and say, this is probably what we need to do. This is before we move forward with-
But we got, we've got to also tell them, you know, this is what we were wanting. This is, you know, we want, you want the lights up.
Right.
We want the fence.
This is different than building like a, a City Hall or a house. A pickleball court is a pickleball court, a tennis court. It's gonna be the same size.
There's no doubt about that.
So I think maybe-
I'm not arguing that. I'm just arguing that when we come, if we get three of them, you found another one, so it's three, three, we invite them all to come over here and give us a price on putting in pickleball courts. First thing they ask is, well, what all you want? What all do you want in there?
I was just saying maybe some advice. You know, that's what they do. So if they could come, they would probably come in before and maybe not even all of them, just somebody who knows about tennis courts and pickleball courts.
We got these in from the two and, uh, and what it says is that, you know, we can't use their, uh, documents for a bid packet. Uh, I mean, you know, it's up to y'all. What y'all wanna do?
Where are we with the parks?
Parks, I'm waiting for our second round of the equipment that I've ordered to come in. Should be in within the next couple of weeks. South Forest is ninety percent complete. We're waiting, well, you just awarded the bid for the, um, War Memorial Park. So when that's completed, that'll be a hundred percent.
So it's everything allocated?
We got purchase orders for everything.
Everything's been encumbered.
Know how much money we have left to go towards this?
Know exactly how much.
With the bathroom and everything that we just did.
Yep. Everything's there.
Because that was the priority.
It's all done. I mean, we're, it's all been encumbered price-wise. Purchase, uh, every bit of what y'all requested that we did, it's all been encumbered. And it come down to what I said it would come down to, that we've got left to do these, uh, pickleball courts. I don't play pickleball or don't play tennis, but we got citizens who do.
Oh, I have no problem with doing them. I'm just trying to save every dime we can, you know? I mean, cause I was under the pressure, maybe the city would bid out the, the fencing by themselves and then the lighting by themselves on separate contracts.
We could do that.
Instead of doing a bulk package where you can save money. I mean, we're doing it for War Memorial Park on the fence, correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, so from day one, I, I've said that I would not vote for anything via pickleball until we had everything done on the court, I mean, on the parks and the bathroom. Uh, with that being said, we voted tonight on the bathroom. My recommendation, maybe to the board of, cause I'm hearing some fours against, uh, maybe tabling it. And if we could just get a, a easy spreadsheet of this is what we spent on the parks, this is what we have left over, um, that, that may, that may, that may change my vote. Is what I, is what I'm offering as a solution.
Five hundred grand.
Is that a motion?
I, I'm just, I'm just throwing that up as discussion.
Put in a motion, we'll, we'll pay-
That's up to y'all. Y'all-
I will. I will.
I can't make the motion myself. All right. Got a motion and second? Is that a substitute or is that-
Yes, sir, that was.
As a substitute motion. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have Jeff Davis Avenue paving and striping. A motion and second for discussion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion. I'm getting tired of this. Uh, David, I've read your letter. You and me talked about this and you, you also said that you might go out and try to find somebody that will do the micro-surfacing because we're going from seventy-five thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a road that I really don't feel like needs to be asphalted, a new overlay put on. So, and you-
And explain, David, what, why it went from what it was to what it is. That we're not just up here asking for a-
No, I read this. I understand this.
I want, I want David to read it out so the citizens understand what we're talking about.
Sure. So we, we intended to perform an asphalt rehabilitation on this. We've tried bidding this a couple of times and, and really have not had good luck in terms of getting any kind of reasonable pricing at all. Uh, but what we thought we would have success with is using the county's term bid for asphalt rehabilitation, which would be micro-surfacing, crack sealing, that sort of thing, which is not, we normally put in, you know, an inch and a half of asphalt. This would be much thinner stuff. It's really kind of rejuvenating asphalt as opposed to rebuilding. And, uh, that, the county term bid contractor basically, after looking at and talking through the scope, said, look, I don't think we can use the county's term bid for this. That's not, our pricing structure with the term bid was, would not cover this. We would not honor that through the county, through an interlocal agreement. So really this was an attempt to, to get something done on Jeff Davis, since we've tried a handful of times already to get the asphalt rehabilitation and really haven't been able to, to make that come to fruition. This would be a more conventional, like Mike was saying, you, you know, you'd mill out asphalt and install an inch and a half of asphalt and then stripe it, as opposed to just putting a very thin, you know, quarter inch of asphalt down or something like that.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what I'm not seeing, but I mean, we don't have potholes. We don't have any businesses coming and complaining about Jeff Davis, do we? I mean, at, right now, I mean-
Y'all brought it up about resurfacing it with a, with a boat coat.
Micro, micro.
And, and putting thermoplastic down for our, our markers and everything again. And this is just a result of what we coming up with. We can't do what y'all had asked us to do. And this is so, another option. Uh, you know, we can go out there right now and do the thermoplastic, uh, you know, on everything. I mean, it's up to y'all. I mean, I've just, we just following directions we were given.
And I just, I have to agree with Mikey and Angie. I don't think that road's in the condition to repave at this point.
You wanna make a motion?
Looking at the other roads in Long Beach that desperately need it.
That, other things that are in need.
Yeah, I'd like to make a substitute motion. We move forward with the striping with the thermoplastic.
I'll second. All right. We got a motion second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next we have Edmund Drive and Old Pass, uh, waterline connection. Motion and second for discussion?
Second.
Discussion. David, I'm gonna ask you to explain what we going on, what we've got down here.
All right. So as part of this contract that's happening on Edmund Drive, you have two locations at the north end on Old Pass Road where we would hot tap the new water main into the existing main. That's something we do all the time. It's a transite main on Old Pass Road, which is asbestos cement. It's safe for drinking water, but, uh, but they are, they do have a tendency to get fragile. And, uh, the contractor expressed some pretty heavy duty concern about how fragile it is. And so before we just jumped in and hot tapped, which they were actually planning on doing that yesterday, we wanted to, to really help you guys understand the, the risk here because of, there's a, a long distance between valves. If this waterline breaks when we hot tap it, we're, we, we stand to have a fairly significant outage. Fifty houses or so would be out of water while that happens. Uh, but I will say, you know, talking with Public Works, um, the, you know, their, their thought is, hey, we, we, we hot tap mains like this all the time, even in fragile condition. And we do it successfully, but we wanted, we felt like this was- we felt like this was kind of a, an opportunity to make sure we all understand the risk. If we hot tap it and it breaks, what that would mean. And so.
How long are we talking about without water?
If it, if it, Joe might know better than me.
I would say less than four, five hours, six hours. We could probably get in there and fix it.
So really, if, you know, and we went through the whole gamut here of, you know, it's been a focus in the city in the last few years to get rid of transite water mains and go with PVC. That's option four, which would be maybe the largest option. You could replace all of this. That's, you know, a large amount. But our, our thought right now is to do maybe a combination of option one and option two. Plan on hot tapping, assuming that Public Works has an opportunity to look at the condition of the main. And if they're good with the hot tap, we move forward, which is exactly what the contract intends right now. If they're not okay with it, then we could replace some small lengths of main to allow us to make the connections in a safer manner where we would have a controlled outage instead of a break.
And I will say this, that, in talking to Public Works and their guy who usually does this, he is, you know, he's been successful a number of times with this transite piping. And, you know, I just want y'all to be aware of this, that.
I concern this forty feet, something goes wrong and turns into.
Much bigger.
Eight hundred feet.
Yeah.
Explain to them how that, how that slayed.
So if you planned on doing option two, which is the twenty feet of replaced main at each connection point, you would turn the main off, which begins your outage, you would cut the pipe out, or cut twenty feet out, and slide a new piece of PVC in, in its place, and use repair couplings on either side. Those are commonly used. It's something we use all the time. And so it would be a fairly controlled thing to do, you know.
I think that we're going to coordinate this together, and Public Works will be ready there to shut water down if we need to. We'll inform the public if it's unsafe to drink. This is not something that's out of our wheelhouse. We've done it many times. I think we've done things like this many times every year.
And we need to make sure that, that if we do have failure in the transite pipe, that the equipment and products needed are on scene to make that quick repair of twenty foot, and make that happen so we could get back in and get service back on.
Yes, sir. That's what I was talking about, coordination together.
Yeah, coordinating all that with them. And, you know, we got to figure out, are we sharing the cost on that with them?
So, Mr. Mayor, this, this actual project has been a thorn in my side to begin with. So I do have a couple of questions regarding this. Will this add time to the contract? And here's why I ask. The contractor let this project sit for a month without being on site because they felt like they had plenty of time on this. I'm not in the business of fixing pipes or anything like that, but I understand that when you leave a project, knowing what the timeframe is, it's not my problem that you ran into, you discovered a problem almost at the finish line. So that's why I have an issue with this. Now, you may tell me, no, Donald, you're wrong. This is something on the city. I guess that's what I'm looking for, that kind of reassurance. Because I do get the phone calls basically on a daily basis.
Every day. Yes, sir.
I think if we.
Yes.
Yes, sir. I think if we proceed with option one, which is basically do what the contract says, then the only time added that we would have here is the fact that we asked them to delay this hot tap from yesterday until tonight, where we could really have an informed decision from you guys. If we were to do some combo, if it did just fall back to option two, there may be an additional couple of days, maybe one or two extra days beyond the two that we're dealing with right now.
Okay, so we're not talking much.
Not talking much. Less than, less than one working week.
We don't even need a motion.
No, I say we just stick with option one, then, I mean, stuff happens on job sites. And if it busts, we just deal with it. We deal with, from there, y'all be prepared to.
They will coordinate with them and move forward.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask this. Would that then take, you know, a vote, how we have to do emergency repairs from time to time to do part B? Is that, is that what we're saying we would do? Or are we going to approve the plan of, hey, let's try option one, but if it doesn't work, we know we have to do option two? I guess I'm just looking for a clarification tonight.
It would be nice if we could get that approval.
Actually, on the ground.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Doing the work with that transite pipe.
I think you're in the right, you're going the right Real House. That I think's best.
Let's make a motion on that, a substitute motion, to approve option one, approve option two if necessary.
And let Public Works make that decision with boots on the ground.
Don't make decisions. All right, that's a substitute motion. We got a second or two. New discussion.
When is, when is this gonna happen?
It'll probably happen this week to get a good look at it and to move forward. If we think that we need to punt to do option two, it'll probably be like a Tuesday of next week.
So we're gonna cut off water no matter what to do?
No, we're not gonna, we're trying not to cut the water off. That's why I think we need to try with option one. Then nobody will be disturbed.
Just want to make sure, but there'll be communication, because the communication is.
Unfortunately, we didn't get to see our water and sewer experts, didn't get to see the pipe condition. So when they dig back down to do this hot tap, we'll get to look at that pipe, make, we'll evaluate it, and then we'll move forward.
Okay.
And then that may punt for three days. This is not something that we want to tear loose on a Friday. This is something that you want to do on a Tuesday. And that way you can get the boil water notice out quickly as possible. So they're only out 24 hours at the most with a boil water notice. But they're only be out four, five hours.
All of y'all, we're discussing this, but this has been done numerous times.
I can't tell you how many times we do this.
We don't know.
Never hear about it.
This is, we've chased the same type. We've had to go forty, fifty feet sometimes. We'll get it.
All the time.
Do you have a second to Timmy's motion?
Yeah. Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none of all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public Works, Amendment eight, Public Works Service, H2O Innovations.
Motion.
Second. Motion is second. Any more discussion? Hearing none of all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Recreation. Bob, you got anything else?
We're good.
Thank you. Building Office, Amendment code ordinance. Mike has, motion is second for discussion.
Motion.
Second. All right, discussion. Mike has put in here a packet of ordinances that we're looking at. I would like to recommend that you take these, because you just got them, and take them and review them, and let's put this on the agenda for the next board meeting, if y'all feel comfortable with that.
I think so.
Do we need to go ahead and do the codes for 2024?
Want to do the, I think I want to do that separate.
Building code, okay. I got you.
Yeah, that's separate.
Okay, yeah, I agree with you.
This, the new ordinances and stuff, I want to go ahead and if, you know, get a motion, substitute motion, second, to move that to the next board meeting. So they'll have time to study that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a couple of seconds. Any discussion?
Discussion. Will you bring, email everybody, like, I know you're trying to do the boats, recreation. We got a vehicle ordinance with amount of vehicles in yards, so on and so forth?
Do for the amount of vehicles.
Okay, and then would you get us all that and then tell us?
I'll get it tomorrow and get all that and send y'all an email.
Okay, tell us how we go enforce it, who's going force it, so on and so forth. Because that seems to be our problem.
Correct. We just have a lot of issues around town that people park their brand-new boat, they park it in the road. Brand-new camper, park it in the road. Trailers, you know, construction guys.
I have no problem in the road, but I have a problem with them being in the.
And they're all in their yard, and it just makes the neighborhood, we get complaints.
But my only problem is the new houses nowadays. They're not, they're eight and a half feet on the side, and you can't put anything in the back.
Exactly. Old Town Gardens is really bad about that, where they're parked in the street, over by Auntie's house, and wood crests and pine crests subdivisions. There's not enough room. You know, and all these people want all these things, but there's not enough room in the neighborhood.
Mike, I don't want to interrupt you. Let's just, let's bring that up in your emails to them. They'll take this. So any more discussion on that? Hearing none of all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, I got another motion I'd like. It's the second part of this, that we need to approve the 2024 International Building Codes and the 2023 National Electric Code. I'd entertain a motion second.
Second.
You got a motion in second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none of all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So you'll get that out. Your codes are updated on your electrical and your building.
Mr. Mayor, I know we voted on it, but just one quick comment. These new codes help insurance rates too. Just throwing that out.
Absolutely.
Means my insurance going down tomorrow?
No.
All right.
Fly-by-night agent.
All right, next we got Municipal Court, Certificate of Completion, Court Clerk, Emma. Congratulations. Thank you for this continuing education. It improves our court, and we're just, we're grateful that you've went, and congratulations. Thank you for what you do in there.
I'm just gonna motion to spread that in a minute's time.
Yeah, and I do need a motion second. Spread. We got a motion second. Any further discussion? Hearing none of all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, Harbor. Harry, you got anything else besides the elevator agreement?
Just, just service for the elevator.
Elevator service agreement. Well, I'll take a motion second on that.
Second.
You got a motion in a second?
Tim.
Okay, I didn't hear you, Tim. I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One more.
Running out of steam, y'all. All right. Courtney, Community Affairs, you have anything?
Is there a deadline for that?
Um, yes, it's December 16th.
December 16th.
All right, you got anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. Darlick Properties, assess cleanup fees, 113 Reeves Street, assessed to Aldia for Astoria. Close, huh?
Motion.
Got a motion in a second?
Second.
Is your motion include the $1,500 penalty?
$1,500 cleanup fee.
Axe.
Motion second for assessed the $1,500 cleanup fee. Any discussion on this? Hearing none of all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we've got a report from our city attorney. You.
Mr. Mayor, if there was, there was a lease matter that I think you wanted to discuss with the board members based on some meetings we've recently had.
Yes, yes, yes. I want to do that. And I also want to do the ARPA, the MC, MWCI, MCWI, whatever it is, I can't remember. Yeah, I want to take that in there, because this is gonna deal with some reimbursement requirements that we've already put in for, for projects we've done. And I want to discuss the legal requirements that we have.
Motion.
Negotiations, I'd request be done in executive session.
Right, yes.
Donald, what?
Motion.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries.
No action was taken in there, but I would like to pull up our ARPA.
I'll make a motion to the table.
Until the next meeting until we get some clarification on some legal issues. I've got a motion second. Any more discussion? Here, none, all is in favor, aye? Any opposed motion carries? Next, I'd entertain a motion as second for discussion of the lease with Long Beach Harbor Resorts. If you have a motion as second.
I'll make a motion that we allow the mayor to enter into a new long-term lease with Harbor...
Long Beach Harbor Resort.
Long Beach Harbor Resorts, excuse me. To be ratified at our next meeting.
Our next meeting and we will, after it's ratified, the next meeting, if both parties agree, we'll be able to release the lease at that time, but we can't until we get that agreement. All right. Any more discussion? Here, none, all is in favor, aye? Any opposed motion carries? Motion to adjourn. Second. Clear, all is in favor, aye? Any opposed motion carries?